Welcome, everyone, to the February 17th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. And are we going to do what it says? We're going to do reports first? Are we going to do the—
Yeah, I think we should do Kurt's first and then—
That's what I would think.
—whatever time you have left over for—
It's a good idea.
All right, then, Kurt.
Okay. Thank you. So this work session is on the implementation of the bond measure to fix streets throughout the city. That's an annual event where we come back and report how that work has been going. So just by way of brief history, in November of 2008, the voters of Eugene passed the first measure to fix streets. It was a five-year, $35.9 million bond measure that subsequently was completed in the 2013 season and part of the 2014 construction season. Subsequent to that, in November of 2012, voters of Eugene approved a renewal of that measure, another five-year measure totaling $43 million. Either the resolutions that have been passed for these bond measures have several specific stipulations. Number one, the money allocated from the bonds were specifically earmarked for specific roadway projects in the city. Secondly, an outside auditor would be contracted with to verify that the funds were spent according to what the bond resolution said they would be spent on. And finally, the bond resolution required that a street repair review panel comprised of citizen members of the community be appointed to provide a report to the city manager, and specifically, that report would be separate and distinct from the auditor's work. And their work is then to bring back a report to the city manager that ultimately formed the basis of this, that they've independently verified that the funding available through the bond measures was spent appropriately. So today's work session will then be to report to you on the findings of the Street Repair Review Panel's work for 2015, which represents its second year of the second bond measure. We'll present to you the auditor's findings as to the financial aspects of the measure, and then we'll give you a brief update on the pavement management report to give you a sense for what all this work is resulting in in terms of the overall network position. So I note every year that when we get into February, it seems like forever ago that we were maneuvering various projects that we dealt with the summer before. So just as a reminder, in 2015, the work included in the bond measure was throughout the city, 15th and 17th avenues and a fair amount to Aggett area by the university, the vicinity of 19th, 22nd, and Fillmore Streets, portions of 25th Avenue, City View Street, Timberline Drive, 39th, 40th, and Braeburn, portions of Avalon Street, Cascade Drive, Elizabeth Street, Jewel Street, Canoe Avenue, Mayland Avenue, together with a number of bike and pedestrian improvements throughout the city, most notably the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons, upgraded crosswalks at many locations, including along Barger Drive, Bailey Hill Road, and Oakway Road. A number of sidewalks were upgraded, bike lane markings were included on various streets as part of the project. The report from the SRRP includes greater detail on all of those projects and the related work. So as to the auditor's findings, there's a copy of their one-page letter in your document. It looks like this. It's from Isler CPA. Each year, they test a portion of the expenditures for the years with the projects. Last year, they were about $6.35 million of bond proceeds. Isler IPA tested $3.4 million of those. In the words of financial auditors, a couple of things in the letter really become what we look for in these. First, at the bottom, at the bottom of page two, third paragraph, the bottom, it's notable that their findings are that, based on our limited testing, we noted that the city followed through this investigation of the city council resolution 5063. And equally notable, near the bottom of page one of the report, it indicates no exceptions were noted. So type of bond report that you would hopefully receive through this type of effort. Moving on then to the Street Repair Review Panel's report, which is also included in your packet, that looks like this, with pictures on the front. The members of this committee are listed in the report, and I will not go through them by name. I might just look around and know that none of them are present in the meeting. Some of them, some of them, I think it's become a bit routine, but just to note that this group has now met for seven, seven times on the bond measure projects. I believe we still have about half a dozen original members. They're not appointed to a lifetime commitment, but welcome to continue if they wish to. And I believe we have six who are part of the original group. So they met three times over the winter to develop their report, and I'm not going to read the report to you, but would note that the important parts you can find in there are that they unanimously concluded that the bond proceeds were used appropriately, which is in fact their charge. They also note several other aspects of the program, beginning with the progress that they see made. In 2015, another 13.2 lane miles of roadways were repaired throughout the city. They note that the deferred maintenance backlog continues to go down. We'll talk a little bit about more about that shortly. They note that significant bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements continue to be completed as a part of this program and draw the nexus between that work and the council's recent adoption of the Vision Zero Resolution. They note the continued focus on sustainable practices and also continue to note the positive effect on the local economy. And last year, the estimated effect was 91 full-pack equivalent construction jobs in the community. I'm going to spend a couple of minutes now talking about the pavement management report, which is the final large handout document.
Before you do, I just wanted to take note that one of your members is in the room now.
Oh.
John Borowski.
Thank you for coming, John.
The high points of the pavement management report, which are slightly more technical document than what else you have, but I would point out a couple of things. Number one, Jeff Langston, our maintenance division manager, is here. If you have specific questions about the report, I will tell you that as you leaf through the pages, you find that our backlog now stands at $79 million. And I suppose when I moved to Eugene, I would have found it difficult to believe that I would report a $79 million backlog in the category of good news, but when you look at the path we've been down getting to that, it's a pretty remarkable accomplishment in its own right. And I say that because the backlog would otherwise have reached an estimated $280 million without these programs. And so just doing some simple math, you can see that thus far, we've avoided $200 million in costs we would otherwise have still been wrestling with. You'll note in the report that the arterial collector, street condition inventory around the city has dramatically improved. Over 60% of the current backlog is now related to residential and local streets, so that's the emerging issue to be dealt with. The downward trend in the backlog is expected to continue to the extent we continue these types of programs and continue to make the investment. On the other hand, if the 2012 measure expires and we elect not to renew that or restore that funding source through some other means, we would expect this $79 million number to grow to about $186 million over the next 10 years absent continued support. So you'll find a summary that we're not, still not spending at the level that we ought to be if we want to get rid of the backlog, but it also indicates that we have made progress. And just as a heads up, next year, we'll recommend the third year of the measure, which is the point in time where we're currently projecting that we will be back at this time next year, recommending that we look for a renewal of this measure in the fall of 2017. So just an early, early heads up on that. The final comment I make as we go through this is that it's always my honor and great opportunity to come and share what has come to be a bit of a good news story about some good work that's happening in the city, but it's also important to point out that this is a true shared responsibility effort in every, every imaginable way. I note the work of the city council, who really worked long and hard to come up with how we're going to go about beginning to address this issue, and I think that's paying off. It took no small amount of courage to put these bond measures on the ballot, and especially the first time around as we were heading into the jaws of pretty onerous downturn. Also, of course, need to acknowledge that the voters have approved both of these measures by substantial margins on both occasions and without their confidence not to have gotten there. Hats off to the staff from all levels across the organization. The bond measure and the financing has been managed efficiently and effectively. The engineering staff and the project management staff have done excellent work in terms of creativity, their coordination, their focus on sustainability, and their communications, both with the public and with the other stakeholders, and collaboration with the other agencies. Utility companies are an important player in this type of work, and especially E-Web, who has their own list of projects they would like to be working on, but they have regularly readjusted their priority list to make sure that we can match ours and stay ahead of us. That has been a no-small task and that we are grateful for that. The local contractor pool, and if I'm not mistaken, every nickel of the 2015 work went to local contractors. They're a top-shelf group of professional constructors and builders. They do excellent work. They've had, provided excellent customer service. They've never let us down, and for seven years of this work have set the mark for how this work can effectively be done. And then finally, the Street Repair Review Panel themselves, including Mr. Borowski. We appreciate the critical review that they provide. They take their charge very seriously, and they actually help us in a number of different ways by offering different insights and serving as ambassadors to the community and sharing accurate information that we can't always get out there and do. So that said, 2016 is shaping up as another extremely busy year. Those projects are listed in the materials that you have, reviews of community attraction. There is no specific action requested or necessary as part of this report each year, but again, we are here to answer any questions or take any comments you have regarding the program.
Thanks very much. Good news. Special thanks to the Street Repair Review Panel. We really appreciate your work on this. And I guess my only question is, I appreciate the voters, and I appreciate the work that's been done and all of that, but looking out into the future, what do you, how do you see us gliding into getting more even? Do you have thoughts on that, Kurt?
To actually get rid of the backlog someday? You know, I think, I think we've become fairly satisfied with the direction that is going, that I think a sense of urgency has kind of gone away. And as you look at the report, to the extent we're investing $10 to $12 million per year and should be investing 17, it's hard, it's hard to suspect that there is an appetite for that much more right now. I would guess, I don't see an alternative to renewing the bond measure at least one more time. Sidebar to all that is that as you get into the third measure, it's likely that you will see some projects that were included in the first measure. And so either we continue the educational effort and people understand that this is not a one-time fix that needs to be done periodically, or people will be asking us for a different way to accomplish this. I think what we're doing is very effective. I think we found that augmenting this from local gas tax, for example, is kind of at the practical limit of where we can be. I guess my own philosophical view of the future is that transportation funding is likely going to be provided in different ways than we're, than we're providing it today. When fossil fuels are not a part of the equation, I think we will, as a state and as a nation, ultimately move to a user-fee type basis. That's no surprise. We've been talking about that at this table for 15-plus years. It's the sustainable, predictable way to manage this. I don't see that on the, on the three-to-five-year horizon, however. If we're able to sustain the status quo with what we're doing for another five years and continue the course that we're on, we will certainly have a glass that's more than half full.
Thank you for those comments. I've got Mike and Alan and Chris in the queue. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Kurt, thank you very much to you, to your staff, to the review panel. I concur with Mayor's remarks and with what I've heard you say. This is, this was a group effort of council, of staff, of the community to say, "Let's fix this better than we have been," and we did, and you did. And yet, I think that staff have delivered more than we promised on more than one front. We fixed more roads than we said we would. We did it for less money than we said we would. So the taxpayer got quite a bargain out of the deal. And I think that's, that's the way to operate well and keep good faith. I'm really happy that we did that so well. If I recall correctly, about three years ago, two, three years ago, I asked you what you thought would be the amount of the backlog of unimproved roads maintenance in our community. I remember that number somewhere around $50 million, but my memory could be bad on that. Where would you say it is today?
I think I could refer you to—
Page?
Page 22 in the—
Excellent.
—pavement management report. And just to give you a sense of the numbers, we're still at about 89 lane miles of unimproved road that estimated cost to bring those to an urban standard is $60 million. Of, of the unimproved roads, we find that, you know, roughly half, half of that inventory is in good, excellent condition for the condition that it's in. In other words, it works. It doesn't call for doing something to make them passable right now. So I think the—
Forgive me. Are you talking about the nature of them from the standpoint of cracks and alligatoring and that sort of thing?
Right. The drivable, functional.
Functional.
As you look at rehab costs on page 22, it's estimated at about just shy of $3.5 million for what, if you could stroke a check today to bring the balance of the unimproved roadway up to a—
With overlays?
Not a maintainable or urban, but—
With overlays?
If you want to do that amount of maintenance-type overlays, that's a lot.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is because as of late, a lot of new development has been happening in wards four and in wards five and in ward six, in fringe areas where a lot of the, what are now becoming arterials are county roads with, at unimproved standard. And some of them are dangerous. We were speaking just the other day at Northeast Neighbors about Gillum Road north of Iris, where literally, it's at least a two- or three-foot ditch. I mean, it'd be up past my knee if I were standing in it. And it's this far from the white stripe on the side of the road. So, and it goes on for five, six blocks more in length on both sides. So a pedestrian is simply not able, a mother with a, you know, with a stroller, that kid on a bike, those are really unsafe at any time and any place in that particular place. And so I wonder if what it would take, I've asked several times if we can do a comprehensive plan for how to deal with our unimproved streets, how to bring them up. I know that the money is the hard part and getting, you know, assessing all the neighbors that would be necessary is the hard part, but I sure would, I don't know the right process to ask you. How do we go about creating a plan? Because sooner or later, we're going to have to do something about that stuff.
I think the answer is that the current policy and guidance that, that's in place for unimproved streets is that properties ultimately pay some portion of the initial cost of getting them brought to a standard. And for roads that, that interact with Lane County, for example, we bring in properties and do what needs to be done to serve new subdivisions. There's, there's a level of improvement that can be required as a part of the development process, and there's a part that needs to be covered by others, Lane County or primarily other property owners. To the, to the issue of how do we, how do we do a comprehensive study of managing the unimproved streets, I think if you, if you look back to the conversation around Jepson Acres, for example, that's a pretty good example of the current policy that's in place that doesn't, doesn't seem to find favor with the council right now. I mean, it's a project where the neighborhood wants to get something done and wants it to look mostly like this, and the city's contribution is this much, which is substantial from SDCs on arterial and collector roadways. And so the, the issue becomes, you know, really the willingness to assess for the balance of that. And if, if part of a comprehensive plan is going to involve either, either a determination to levy those assessments or to decide that they're going to be paid from some other way, either, either course is fraught with tough, tough decisions.
The, there's a policy question we need to answer, which is, can we allow a road of that standard to become a major arterial when it's dangerous? And/or if we're developing beyond it, should we require something? I guess I'll need another round here, but I want to talk more about that policy issue when I get another round.
Alan?
Yeah, nice job, Kurt, and kudos to your team. They've done a wonderful job. Thanks, and thanks to the citizen review panel for looking at this and concurring that we spent the money on what we said we'd spend the money on. This is one of those programs working exactly as we said it would, and we're cutting that backlog from almost $300 million down to less than $80 million. So thanks to the voters for that. And so if we're supposed to be spending about $17 million, we're spending $10 to $12 million, so there's a $5 to $7 million gap, and we renew it the next time, we reduce the backlog, but we never, it kind of looks like we never catch up, unless we are going to increase that amount substantially to eliminate the backlog entirely.
Kurt, the $17 million figure is, is a number designed to take the backlog down to effectively zero in 10 years. So does that mean once you do that, you don't have to do any more work? No, because the work that you did 10, 12, 15 years ago needs to continue to be redone. So the, the backlog ideally is going to be something on the order of a number equivalent to the revenues that you have coming in without asking for more. So it's how much work do you need to do each year? That's your backlog. You budget for it and do it. And so it's, it's a, the concept is getting to a zero deferred maintenance, not necessarily a zero backlog. Always that work needs to be done.
So what would that number look like if we got rid of the backlog to zero? What would the, what would the annual number look like then?
I don't, I don't think that's the number that we generated. I know that—
Less than 17.
Oddly enough, when we, when we started into this process in, in 2001, I think that number was on the $3 to $5 million area. I would, I would guess with passage time, inventory, and, and construction costs, you know, I suppose it's twice that. Seven, seven to 10 might be it.
Yeah, okay. Seven to 10. I, I think when we look at the next one, I think it might behoove us to look at what it would take to get that backlog down to zero as one of the options for putting out bonds, maybe, maybe one or maybe two bond cycles for five years. But I think the keys to success for the voter, getting voter approval for these were that we limited the number of dollars, so that kind of flies in the face of that, but, but it might be a good story to tell. It benefits every part. When we look at this, the map of all the projects, they're all over the city, so everybody got some benefit out of it. And there was that big chunk of accountability. We said what we're going to do, and we did exactly what we're going to do, said we were going to do. And, you know, we have the list of projects we're going to do, and we do those. And, and I think that really shows in our ability to pull off what we, what we intended to do. And I think that's why in the second bond, the actual percentage of people who voted for it went up. So that was very good, too. I just live up close and personal with 15th and 17th book in my house, so while it was kind of a pain to deal with it, now we have these beautiful new streets, and they look great. So kudos to all the, they did a fantastic job. One of them, 15th, is concrete, the other one's asphalt. I'm kind of wondering if you could tell me when we do concrete, when we do asphalt, cost difference, and how long they live, what their lifespan is? I know it depends on the use of the road, but—
Yeah, I think the short answer would be that existing concrete is typically replaced with concrete. Existing asphalt is typically replaced with asphalt, just as a construction order of economy measure. There are folks, folks like Jeff, who would, can't argue that in a, in a perfect world, every street would be concrete, because then you're done, you really are done working on it for a long period of time. The downside of that is that utility companies continue to want to operate in the right-of-way until you get into that. I think, I think as a, as a general rule, concrete construction would be, I don't know—
Three, three times, four times?
Upfront construction. It's, as I recall, it used to be maybe a factor of four initial construction, but then the maintenance is protracted out before you have to do any work on it versus, you know, an asphalt street is cheaper upfront, but then is going to require an ongoing maintenance. So there are lifecycle cost studies that, that go on. And as I've had the opinion through a lot of my career, that if, if you didn't have entities needing to operate underneath the concrete street sections, they would, they would make perfectly good sense everywhere. So in urban areas like this, we've, we've tried to find a middle ground. If something has worked well as concrete, then we'll, as often as not, put that back in place. Then you'll see a lot of intersection work around town that since a lot of that work is very disruptive, and I think of the 28th and Willamette intersection several years ago, that really disrupts a lot of traffic, businesses, and lives. So if, if the rest of a project is asphalt, but if, while you have things shut down, you construct a concrete intersection and give them some assurance that you're done bothering them for the rest of their business lives, you know, we do some of those things. things. But yeah, is that somewhat helpful?
Yeah, yeah. I noticed it says overlay and reconstruct on the project list for the next couple of years. When do you determine which is which?
It's all decided through a matter of testing as we go into the project. And if if we went out driving around, looked at a street section and say, well, that one sure looks like it needs to be reconstructed, we subsequently test it and find the way, oh, no, it's just a surface issue that can be fixed. It's it's all a scientific method that's determined prior to prior to going out to bid.
I know there's a lot of people say, why are you doing that street when that street's so much worse? And it's because the the street that's so much worse, you want to prevent that street from getting so much worse, because you have to do a rebuild over here, which is four times more expensive than just fixing it. So that's why we do that that way. And one last question, can you describe?
Thank you. I really appreciate the report. When I first ran for the council 12 years ago, one of the most significant crises that the city faced, in addition to downtown, was the condition of its roads and streets. And it was it was a major issue. We not only had a huge backlog, as you pointed out, but we also didn't have the money to cover the yearly maintenance, as you all, as you also pointed out. And when Al and I served on the Transportation Task Force, one of the options which came out of that was the bond measure, along with some other things, but also the recognition that we needed to do something to ensure that yearly maintenance money was there so that more streets didn't fall into the backlog. And so I think the city as a whole can take a lot of credit for getting the bond measure through to be able to reduce that backlog from nearly 300 to less than 80. That is remarkable news. But also that the staff's ability to figure out how to deal with the yearly maintenance aspect has also been incredibly overwhelming. And you need to publicly be given a lot of credit for figuring out how to deal with that yearly maintenance cost, because that is also a significant factor in keeping these streets from falling off. So I think in the last 10 or 12 years, we have done almost a miraculous job of taking what was an incredible legacy of neglect and turning it into a real solid improvement that is actually a model for other communities to look to us and say, wow, look at what Eugene has done. Can we somehow follow some of their example? And that's a credit to you and to the committee and to and to the voters in Eugene who saw that need and who stepped up and supported it. And I think to that point, when you're sick and they give you antibiotics, the worst thing you can do is stop taking them as soon as you feel a little better. You need to keep taking them. And I think the backlog of streets is just that same situation. We shouldn't stop now. We cannot get complacent. There is a need to continue to get completely free of that problem. And I think we need to step up and say, yeah, we need to renew that bond. If you really and truly want the transportation system, it's not just a matter of the yearly maintenance, it's getting rid of that backlog. And if we need to do it in one or two more cycles, I think we need to commit to doing that, because it's only that way, it's only through that commitment that we will truly get there. And so, yes, we've done an enormous amount of good work. And I think we have demonstrated to the to the people of Eugene that the city is willing to step up to these issues, is willing to come up with practical solutions to these issues, and can be trusted to deliver on the promises we make on these issues. And I think there's still work to do. We need to finish our treatment so that we can make sure that disease never returns. And it's a credit, not only to us, but it is an enormous credit to you and the staff. And I just wanted to publicly say, you've done an enormous amount to keep that yearly maintenance level where it needs to be. And that has kept us secure for many of these years. And I thank you for that.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. Kurt, great report. And I will note, I really appreciate you and staff getting back to me when I have inquiries about streets in my ward and doing that in a very, very quick fashion. A couple of things right off the top. One of the things that that residents routinely email me about or call me about is, you know, the old big question, when is my street going to get fixed? When is my street going to get repaired? And is there a way that, I don't know, we can do better in terms of communicating that schedule? Because what will happen is where as the last three years that I've been on council, I periodically am getting calls about Jacobs Drive. And I say, it'll it'll happen in 2016, just wait, it'll get there. And it was, why are they getting this over here? Why getting over there? I say, it's, you know, part of the process. And and there's some scheduling issues around that and prioritization. How can we better, for one question, better be able to communicate that to the residents that are out there? And the second question is this, going back to something that Mike said about, you know, overall road improvements and installation of sidewalks and other amenities that are kind of shared cost between the property owner and the city. You know, there there are certain people who make assumptions that the city should install sidewalks and curbs and all the rest of that. And I think that there's there needs to be a better education process around what those homeowner responsibility or property owner responsibilities are versus what the city can't do in those regards. So those two questions.
As to the providing information to the public, I mean, I think that's that's something that folks like Brian Richardson work on every day. Some of the information as to scheduling specific roads, like the bond measure, for example, is pretty accessible via the website. Others are not not quite as apparent. So sometimes it's a it's a phone call or an email to to maintenance. Longer term, I think you might recall that a year ago or so, we changed the pavement management system that we use to record and score pavements that show up in the report. And potentially longer term, a more user friendly version of that where folks can look up my address and what's the street condition in front, and get some indication as to where where that stands on the on the continuum. But I I think the I don't have a good answer as to how we do better around public information, but take take the comment seriously and see what we can what we can do with that piece. Shared responsibility for construction costs is it's not a not a Eugene specific issue. I mean, it's it's something that municipalities across the country deal with. There are there are states, counties, agencies who have determined that when when you buy a piece of property in in that city, it's turnkey and everything is covered. The downside of that is that they might they might have property tax bills of, you know, three, $4,000 a month to make sure they don't have to pay for sidewalks or do some of these things. Other other communities have slightly different models from from Eugene, where there aren't SDC contributions, for example. There are still communities that that push the entire cost of construction off to development process or or property owners. I think Eugene probably has a, I guess, in my opinion, a reasonable hybrid model where as a municipality, we provide a basket of services, and the balance of that is is left to property owners. One of those that's left is payment for the non-assessable cost of street improvements, sidewalks, and and et cetera. And I think as no matter what model you have, you do have the rub when it comes time to ask someone to participate in the cost. So so strike two, I guess. I don't I don't have a good answer as how we do that differently. But that's kind of a historic perspective on on how we got where we are and why we are where we're at with it.
No, it it raises some equity issues in terms of homeowners who may not have the wherewithal or the ability to pay for those those improvements. And I think that's where, you know, like periodically, I think all of us get emails about about that from time to time. And, you know, why is this street not my street? And I email back and say, well, you got to, you and your neighbors have to share in the cost of that. So and they don't, as most people wouldn't be too thrilled with me when I give them that answer. So.
Okay. I just wanted to take note that Janet Calvert's here, too, who's on the committee.
And Sue Walling.
Sue Walling, yep. Thank you all. All right, round two. I've got Mike and then Alan. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So help me, I get, I want to get a little specific so I can understand this better. How is collector arterial determined by traffic count predominantly? Or what's the method by which you determine that or classify a street in that way?
The real, the real brief answer is that they're identified in the arterial collector street plan by the city that's adopted by the council. And it takes into account, among other things, traffic volumes.
Is that in CIP? Where is that?
It's a standalone document.
Okay. Didn't know that. I've been here 10 years, and I didn't know that. Wow.
You know every document that's in this?
Yeah, wow.
You can read them all.
So we do that just by act, you know, we claim that's what it is, and it doesn't have anything to do with whether or not a street has got a lot of traffic or a little traffic, or it doesn't have anything to do with the number of houses that are on any particular part of it?
It's actually a transportation planning effort.
Okay.
In the arterial collector street plan, you will see roadway segments classified as arterials or collectors that don't exist yet. It's a plan. And so the designation is not correlated to the condition or existence of of whatever road structures there.
Does it frequently happen that a road not planned to be such later becomes one?
I think that's always, it's always possible. And I'm trying to think if we've had any that have been subject to that over time. There's there's nothing that would preclude that. Arcadia Drive is an example of one that could have, should have, would have been one way or the other, and talked about it periodically, but didn't make a change.
Sounds like this council, though, does have the authority, based on the approval of that plan, to to change a classification if the council's so thought.
I suppose that's true.
I think probably true. The council has authority for those things. One of the things that when they're designated, there's actually engineering standards that generally come into play.
That's what I'm looking for.
Based on volumes, it's based on connectivity. So not dissimilar to the interstate system. You have interstate systems that the the US DOT actually maintains, and then you can get down in the county roads. And so a collector arterial, for example, are those that are your main thoroughfares, as opposed to a local street, which really only takes people from their house out to a road that tends to collect all these residential areas and then moves them into these.
Well, and that's that's what I'm trying to get to. What's the standard? Does it have to have three side streets that connect to it? Or does it have to have X number of houses built where that's the only way they can get out? What are the standards easy to talk about? Number one, can they be measured? Number two, or is it arbitrary?
Kurt can answer that. My guesses are pretty measured from an engineering perspective, with some judgment by the engineers on that. But I'll let you.
Yeah, the easiest way might might be for me to send you a link to the specific pages out of the arterial collector street plan that provide the basis for for which the recommendations were made in the in the first place.
And I appreciate that, and I will like that. My question, though, is about how it gets determined. Does this council have the authority to decide that is a collector, that is not?
I believe that the the council receives recommendations from traffic engineering, transportation, planning, review for inclusion, exclusion, modification of the arterial collector street plan, and then subsequently adopt that.
Here's here's why. Right now, we keep building houses in less dense parts of our community, which tend to be at the fringes. And old rural used to be county roads that head off towards the edge and just had a few houses on each side, now have roads spiking off them. And they have whole neighborhoods springing up around those roads. And that one used to be county road with no improvements on the side of it is now an arterial collector by default. But we may not be calling it that. So I'm trying to get to the point of how we finance what we improve. It would seem to me that when someone pays a systems development charge to build all these houses in the new parts of a fringe area, or in in our case in North Eugene, a lot of multifamily housing, like a thousand new units, that the SDCs paid for that should go towards supplementing what the people who live along the street should have to pay in order to bring that now arterial up to an appropriate standard. Because that's why they're paying the system development charge. They're saying, we want the system's capacity to now cover what it is that we're adding by living here. So how do we change the policies such that we have that occur easily in our community?
Yeah. A good question, and probably a protracted debate over over SDCs. But I an equivalent argument can be made that SDCs are paid to cover the investment that an individual's predecessors have made in the system from which the next development is benefiting. It's not, it's not paying an SDC in as part of the development, because now you, the city, need to go build something to accommodate that. It's it's a it's a payment on on a previous investment that's been made as equally as money that goes in for for building new improvements that specifically benefit a given development. So there, I'm just saying there are a number of ways to to slice that that particular pie.
I don't know how three minutes goes away so fast sometimes. I'm gonna need another round, please, Mayor, because I got a couple more questions on this.
So I'm gonna go to Betty, because she has not had it round yet.
Thank you. Can I ask for three rounds right now? I don't want them. I'm just kidding. I could, an answer to Mike's question about when they became arterial streets, I think it was about 22 years ago. I remember when they were discussing it, when it was approximately then it was adopted. It was before I was on council, so it was a long time ago. I had a, and I think we should invite Christine, your predecessor, back to look at the streets. She was always saying, it's going to get worse and worse if you don't do anything. And she would be happy if she were still here to see what's happened. And I'm sure you're happier than you were. You look happier than you did a few years ago. I had two questions. One, when do you do, is there a routine examination of all streets to see whether they're falling into a state where it will be impossible to repair them?
Yep.
Each street, I mean, residential streets, they all get
Right, yeah.
Looked at sometime. That's good. Another question, do we ever take down barriers that are put up where a street is closed and you can only go one way, which sometimes is for a good reason, and sometimes it seems that all it does is cause problems for the people on the next street.
Yep, I think we deal with some of those periodically. So if
Do you examine those now and then?
Not as a routine, but on a if someone brings things to our attention, we certainly take a look at them.
I wouldn't want to say anything publicly about any street that that maybe shouldn't have the barrier. And there, I live near four barriers. And there's a very good reason for the one that keeps traffic from coming near me. Actually, actually, that happened years ago when a child was killed on that street. But another one, I don't know why it happened. But I think it would be good sometimes to look at them and see if they're doing something bad to the people on the next street over. Okay, thank you.
I've got Alan and then Chris.
Yeah, Kurt, isn't the the theory for the unimproved streets, the funding for the unimproved streets, isn't it that when the people that have improved streets paid for that when they bought their house? It's included in the price of their house, because they, the developer had to build that street, so you had to pay for that. And the people who have unimproved streets didn't have to pay for that. It's not included in the price of their house, so they're not paying it through their mortgage. And therefore, if we were to just say, okay, everybody has to pay for the unimproved streets, there would be a subsidy going from the improved streets that already paid for it to the people who didn't pay for it. And that's why we don't do it that way? That's the, okay. Yeah, that that makes it difficult to overcome the equity issues, because there's another equity issue of who paid for what, when. And, you know, 60% of our our unimproved streets are actually in good to excellent condition, 14% poor, about 26% fair. And $3.3 million doesn't seem like that much in the grander scheme of things. But it's, I think there's a tough road to get to funding all those to get them up a, I think there's a tough road to get to funding all those, to get them up to speed. And most folks don't have a sense of how much this stuff costs, or how expensive these projects are. The 15th and 17th projects I was talking about, just six blocks, is $2.1 million. And overlay costs are, what, $250,000 a mile to reconstruct to $600,000 to $800,000 a mile? So, it's really quite expensive. We had, at the Sustainability Commission, we had a briefing about, from your staff, about your sustainable practices you're doing. Maybe you could describe the low-carbon, warm mix and the in-place recycling process that we do that, we're one of the only ones in the country that do some of that.
Yeah, sure. Maybe, just briefly, the Warm Mix Asphalt Convention is one that we've had in place for several seasons now. And the concept is that by lowering the temperature of the mix, we're able to achieve lower oil content, so less use of resource. We find that the mix tends to compact better, so you get a better, longer, more durable finished product. And by virtue of a lower temperature, you end up burning off fewer of the volatiles that are associated with the asphalt oil that are in the mix. And it was determined through a research process that throughout the convention that we needed to be at 300-plus degrees to get this to the right temperature, and roll it down to the 250 or so degree range that provides those benefits. So, it's cheaper, less degradation to the environment, and a better product when we're done. So, it's, you know, it's a true triple bottom line that, it didn't happen by accident, but folks figured it out, and it's becoming kind of the norm in the industry now. And proud of the staff for having, had the courage to lean on that a number of years ago. Full-depth reclamation is, again, not a new concept, but one that, as you get more conscious about devolving into a throwaway society, you think about what is it that you can do with the materials that are there versus haul them off to a landfill or a waste pile. And so, the full-depth reclamation process is simply what I've described as a gigantic rototiller that you take down the street section, co-mingle the base course and the surface course into a new base course, replace that in place as an engineered base, and end up essentially wasting no material. That preserves resources, lowers the cost over time, and doesn't take up space in landfill or other sites. So, it's another win-win-win on that side of things. Gets us a better product, lower cost, and takes less time to build typically, so.
And less trucks going back and forth from the project, because they're not moving stuff away, they're just using it in place. Potholes are still being filled, because I call all the time and they get filled. How does that work? On the back of my council cards, I have a pothole. Report a pothole, 541-682-4800. 5682-4800, that's the number to call for getting your potholes.
That's a good phone number to call. There's also an online application if you go to the site that, I can't give you the URL sitting here, but I can tell you it's very easy, it's simple enough that I've been able to use it. And that's usually a pretty good test, where you can literally go in and almost pinpoint, it's right here in this intersection, and it's equally or more effective than the phone call, because that comes in and is tracked immediately as it comes in and is dispatched, and typically a day or two turnaround to get to those.
Is that in the, what section of the website?
Oh, the Public Works website.
Of course, okay.
Last thing, in Springfield on Main Street, after that tragedy where the children got killed, they put up the yellow markers around the perimeter of the signals. And I've driven down there, and I could see them so much better, especially when the glare is coming because they're facing into the sun. And they work extremely well, and that's now the standard, I think, in Springfield for those kinds of streets. And can this become our standard? It's not currently, as I understand it. What's holding us back? They seem to work really well.
Yeah. The standard for traffic control devices is the manual, manual and uniform traffic control devices, and those types of amenities are identified in there as available. So, I guess I would say it is, it's an available standard. It's not something that we would immediately move to implement at every traffic signal or stop sign location, although I've seen them myself in lots smaller communities than Eugene, and they, in their place are very effective. So, it's part of what we have available to us to work with. I just have not implemented yet.
I don't know that we'd want to put them everywhere, but on certain streets that are busy where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, I think that's probably a good idea. If you can look at that. Thanks.
Chris?
Yeah, maybe we can start phasing them in, so that we didn't have an increased cost, but as we replace lights, maybe that's something we do. I agree, it's a good idea. If I recall from some of our conversations in the past, the city council does have the ability to redesignate streets. Crest Drive is one that comes to mind, which was identified as an arterial collector in the plan. But because of input from the neighbors and other considerations, we decided to not develop that to a arterial collector standard. So, we do have the authority to do that, but we need to have a good reason to do that, because an arterial collector in the plan is the logical and practical way to move people from their neighborhoods onto the major streets. And so, they need to be built to a standard to be able to accommodate that traffic, whether that traffic is there now, or whether we anticipate that traffic in the future as more development occurs. And that standard is very clear of what a arterial collector looks like. And I know that the cost for those is higher than a residential street, and that the city does pick up a larger portion, but that the neighbors also have to pick up a slightly larger portion as well, which is why some people think, "I may not want to be designated an arterial collector, because I don't want to pay the extra money. Leave me as a neighborhood street. If I'm going to have to pay, I want to pay less." That may not be in the best interests of the city, but we do have the authority to make those decisions. I know with River Avenue, that was also a street that had a certain standard, and the city council said, "We want a different standard, simply to make that cost more affordable." So, there's a lot of flexibility. But the point I'm making is, we need to be very careful when we do make those redesignations, because the standard is there for a reason. And the standards, in I think most instances, are good standards, and we need to keep them in mind as we develop, because those times we've deviated from the standard, I think we may not have gotten the best outcome we were looking for. And to the point about, should we change the system for financing on unimproved streets? Over 100 years, we've been doing it the way we've been doing it. And when I bought my home, I paid for the street in the cost of my home. To suddenly change it is something that is within the power of the council to do. But I think, once again, we would need to have a good reason from an equity standpoint and a fairness standpoint to say, "We're going to change the system from now on, and people who've already paid for their streets are now going to pay for other people's streets as well," when that's never been the system. I'm not saying that that's not a good idea or a bad idea, but you want to make sure you take those thoughts into mind before you start changing the entire system and affecting, you know, all the people that already live here. And so, yeah, I don't want to have to pay to improve my street. I already have to pay to improve my street, and it's part of how the system works, and there's some flexibility around the standards. But we just need to be mindful of saying, "Oh, well, they don't want to pay for it, so we should figure out a way for them not to have to," when I had to pay for mine and everyone else has had to pay for theirs.
Last one, Mike.
Thank you, Kurt. I don't want to be misunderstood. I think you're an incredible professional who does a wonderful job, and I don't want my questions to seem like I'm in conflict with the same thing you want. I don't want to do that. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how to answer a question that a bunch of my constituents have, that several, I don't know the good answer. They're stuck in a quandary that's a little bit different than what either Chris or Alan has presented here in talking about the hypotheticals, in that we've developed at a rate that's not been what's typical over time for 100 years in our community, in some parts of our community. And the folks who live along what was an old country, and folks in River Road in Santa Clara, this is coming someday soon. They lived on a nice road that they moved to for a quality of life that was very specific. And the infill came in fast, and they never counted on their little road that went one direction with a few houses on each side, becoming an arterial collector within a couple of years, that suddenly there's a zillion cars, you know, because there's so many houses that are built with no other way out than that road. So, do they have the ability to say, "No, you can't build those houses in there, because we don't want our road to get that busy?" And if they don't, because the city needs to grow in those places, doesn't the city have a responsibility to supplement to some degree what those homeowners never imagined would be the reality for them in their lifetimes? That's the kind of question. So, I'm not asking you about how to debate it. I'm saying, what are the options that we have for how we might address the policy? I'm not wondering what's the other side of the debate, okay? I wonder, how do we address that appropriately with policy? Point number one. Point number two, what would you suggest we do to fix that problem for those residents?
Yeah, and maybe just restating the question slightly differently. An existing roadway that has been functionally adequate for a period of time now is not functionally adequate because of the added demands on it, and at what point do we make it more functionally adequate to keep up with what's happened? Is that kind of the issue? Needs to be upgraded?
Yeah.
And what's the city's responsibility? Most typically, those are, I'm just speaking generally, those are the types of projects that feed into the CIP for upgrading the transportation network.
So, we can do that? We can add something to the CIP just at this table? How do we have input on that?
No, not necessarily. But the CIP is updated every two years, and to the extent those types of issues are brought in, we take a look at those and how they're applicable to the CIP. Remember, the Transportation System Plan is in the final throes of being updated that provides guidance as to the classification and overall network prospects over time. The CIP is the follow-on that says, "Here's how we go about implementing these things." The budget process then becomes, "Do we have the money to do what we want to do with the CIP?"
I'm trying to be the best counselor I can and respond to these residents. So, what I'm saying is, what do I do as a counselor to affect the situation, to get those roads changed more quickly?
And you might, you might have the added complication of some of those are not city jurisdiction, which is...
But the county and the city have formed LIDs before, plenty of times, like they did with ours.
Sure.
Yeah. So, what should a counselor do in order to address this in the best possible way and most effective way for his constituents?
Best answer I give you now is, get with me and let me know what the specific issues are that you're dealing with, and we'll have the smartest people that we have try to give you the best answers that we can as to how you can do some of that.
Thank you, sir, very much.
So, that. Thank you so much, Kirk, for the report. And thank you to all the members of your committee. We appreciate it very, very much. And we'll move on now to committee reports and items of interest, and I'll start with Councilor Evans.
I'll pass, Mayor. My next committee meeting is in two hours.
All right. Councilor Brown?
I don't have anything.
Councilor Poling?
That'll lay a workforce meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Betty?
Thank you. So, I get all their time.
They deferred to you, Betty.
El Rapa met recently. There's a change in the membership of El Rapa through the state, actually, buyer from Springfield proposed that we change the membership, because Cottage Grove and Oak Ridge used to each have, take turns being on the El Rapa board. We have increased the size of the board now, as allowed by the state, so that Cottage Grove and Oak Ridge will each have a representative all the time. And we discussed dues from the various governments and decided not to ask for any more money this year, though, except what comes naturally from population increase. If the organization could do more of the things they used to do if they had more money, as many groups could, but we decided it was not a good time to ask for more money. And that's, I think that's all I have right now. The Budget Committee will be meeting next month and the month after that, and if anyone's interested, you could come and listen. We still haven't discussed, we still haven't finished discussing emission controls for automobiles. Somebody from EPA is supposed to come and talk to us in a couple of months, I think. Thanks.
Chris?
Yeah. The ElCog met last week, and their regular meeting was what they held. And also, the annual ElCog Appreciation Dinner is February 26. If you'd like to go to that, I think it would be a great thing. It'll be at LCC campus. And I think just let the staff know at the city manager's office if you'd like to go. It's usually a great event, they provide awards. Also, the Housing Policy Board Home Funds Consortium has got that box sitting over there underneath my coat, is the applications for home funds. And right now, we're looking primarily at applications in the Springfield area. Because of the way the HUD money comes through now, we're now looking at both Eugene and Springfield together as a consortium, and I'm actually very excited about that possibility. And then last night, the Human Rights Commission met, and is going to be forwarding two motions to us. The first one is regarding creating an Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday in October. And the second one is around the notion of supporting a Housing First policy for the city of Eugene. So, those at some point will be forwarded to us, and I can give you more information about those when they come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. Number one, this council passed an ordinance, I'll say, I think we passed all the pieces that, yeah, we did, where the Mupti had an additional feature that didn't always apply only to Muptis, and it was the SDC applicable credit to large, multiple-unit developments that would help alleviate impacts on neighborhoods. And that was the piece we put in there that had the neighborhood association having the ability to meet with the developer and meet with everybody involved in the city and so forth, make application to the council for that credit, so as to minimize effects on neighborhoods when there was new multi-unit developments, when they were built. As I understand it, George and I are going to meet on Friday with a whole group of folks and neighborhood associations, and maybe some other folks in order to talk about that. I don't know if they called you up. I apologize. There is an opportunity for us to put that into action here soon, and have something like that come before council, as I understand it, soon in our neck of the woods. So, I'm very excited about seeing that new policy work. Secondarily, I would like to give a heads-up that an interesting thing happened in our, for all of us, in our downtown recently, that wasn't good. And in conversation with the manager, there were some thoughts that produced an idea for me that I will be bringing in the form of a motion, once we have clarity on what that should look like. And it's that Holt Center, when built, was built by a lot of folks that helped raise an awful lot of money on a private basis to have that happen, and that's why it's called the Holt Center. The Jacobs Gallery was an organization of folks who had art there. But the Jacobs Gallery is also the name of the space, to a degree. And I was talking to the manager about whether or not we're sure about how that space is named in the future. I believe it should remain the Jacobs Gallery in perpetuity, no matter what takes place in that space in terms of presentation. So, I'll have a motion to that effect of naming it appropriately here, probably with the next meeting, I would think.
Yeah, I understand there's been some meetings about that.
Yeah.
Talked to people, too.
Yeah.
You have a protocol about that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's how it works.
Alan?
Yeah. Two things. Sustainability Commission, MPC. Sustainability Commission, I mentioned the Sustainable Roads Program. We had a briefing by Kurt's staff about that, and I asked them to describe that. But the other big news on the Sustainability Commission is that our longtime staff liaison person and sustainability coordinator, Babe O'Sullivan, is leaving the city and going on to another job. So, I just wanted to thank her for the work that she has done over the years. It's really a good job that she's done for the Sustainability Commission and for the city in that role as sustainability coordinator, and wish her luck in her next endeavor. On MPC, there... On MPC, there were, the big news was the STIP dollars, Surface Transportation Program Urban. So, it's, they call it STIP money.
STFU.
And STFU. And it is a competition in every region in, there's five regions in the state. And we all put together our list of projects, and our city put in some, Springfield put in some, Lane County, other people, Florence, other folks. And then, so, the MPC takes its projects, which is the urban area, forwards them to the Lane Act, and then they forward to the Super Act, and then the Super Act forwards it on to the Oregon Transportation Commission. Well, glad to hear that five of our six projects actually from the local area that got forwarded up that chain got funded. Two in particular that are in Eugene are good projects. The first one is the Roosevelt Path Extension. It goes from, there's a bike ped path that is a gap between Maple and Highway 99 on Roosevelt. So, this will fill that, fix that little gap, and that'll connect up to the new path that's going to go over the overpass on Highway 99. So, that's a project that got funded. And then, the other one is the High Street Protected Bike Lane. There's a current protected bike lane path through the Amazon area that exists. The southern part of that will be a protected path that will go down the Amazon all the way to the Amazon Headwaters. It's already programmed to be funded. And the grant that we won was to go from about 19th all the way up to E-Web in a protected bike lane. So, you'll be able to bisect the city on this part of the city from north to south on High Street, all the way from E-Web all the way down to the Amazon Headwaters with this new grant. So, those are two really good projects. I have a little more detail if anybody wants to look at it.
Thank you. So, I wanted to let you know that yesterday, the RAIN, the Regional Accelerator and Innovation Network Board meeting occurred in Corvallis, and I serve on that board as a mayor of Eugene. And I think the work that's happening in both accelerators and in RAIN in general is kind of incredibly successful right now, from the 400 people who showed up in the halt for gathering around it to the kind of participation from people investing dollars in these businesses. So, there's nothing but, in terms of the accelerators and outreach and funding and investing, everything is going very, very well. And I wanted to mention that this, and maybe the city manager could add to that, is they had a hackathon here this last weekend and presenting some challenges to the tech community. And the people, how many participated, John?
You know, there's probably a good 40 folks, I would guess.
And they were high school, college, out of the tech community.
Professionals.
And worked on two or three problems, including...
You know, there was probably a half a dozen, six or seven different problems or challenges they worked on. Fifteenth Night was one in particular that there were three teams. There was some work on some things that DEI and the Red Caps had an interest in. There was a group working on the parkade, parking garage, and some pretty innovative stuff that Jeff Petrie has been working on there. They had some for wayfinding and the First Friday. So, it was a great event.
And both the city manager and I were there to kick it off, and he was there for the, when they picked the winners for the, so it was a great event. And I want to, I want to call out Matt Sayer and Josh Purvis for their work on, there's others. I probably am not listing everybody I should list.
Right, but they were the main two that really drove it.
Right. So, it was a great event. It was very successful. We want to express our appreciation to them for doing that. Yesterday, we had a luncheon honoring all the people who worked on Operation 365 to house homeless vets in 2015, kind of celebrating a lot of hard work on the part of a lot of people, where we, as you know, surpassed our 365 goal and actually housed 404. So, it was a really lovely occasion and really appreciated all the work that everyone has done. And then, my final thing is that next Tuesday, we have the mayor's one-on-one, and that's going to be at Fred Meyer on Division. That's, who's, is that yours?
Yeah.
Yep. And so, people are invited to come and discuss any topic they would like to discuss at 5:00 on Tuesday with Counselor Clark on. And yes, Mike.
Sorry, you weren't there at the end. You may not have known, but I was one of the four judges for that, for the Hack, for a Cause event the other day. And I must tell you that I was very impressed with some of the things that folks came up with over a two-day period in that room. One of the things that I got to be the judge for, and there was only one contestant in that category, so it was a very difficult decision, but the, I must tell you, the solution that came up, that the folks from the Engine Company and a couple of others came up with, Ben and his team, did a fantastic job of creating a wayfinding device. And it was really more than just creating a website or creating something that was a tool that would help some service in the community. This was actually a technology and a device that they came up with in its complete combination that allows for innovative ways to, for visitors to our community to find where they are with, you know, five or 10 of these things throughout our downtown. It also created some new opportunities for communication and for emergency services. And I hope that we'll see at least some possibility of a discussion of those perhaps being positioned in our downtown sometime soon. But I thought that both theirs and the high school, or the kids from South Eugene that did the robotic presentation was fascinating. So, congratulations to all the folks who won and that participated.
And I think we'd like everybody to know that much as we honor the ones that won, all the ideas will be put to good use and we'll be, we'll use as much of that as we can. And one of the things that I thought I really appreciated is in our discussions about, and actually, part of what came out of that community forum that we had on downtown solutions was an idea about a kiosk, you remember? And we had this, we had conversations about a real kiosk or a virtual kiosk. And then, manager and others kind of took that idea and put it with the work they've been doing on Fifteenth Night. And so, putting all those pieces together to try to create something that will help people, you may want to talk more about that, John, but it's to help people find things in the community, right?
Yeah, I think the Fifteenth Night challenge was really trying to put a technology solution to connecting a need in real time with somebody who can match that need. And there's, there's much to, that would be a part of that with respect to privacy and security and integrity and all those kinds of things. But that's the basic system. And there were three teams competing for that. All three did a great job. We had to select one of them. But I think there are pieces from all three that we will use as part of the Fifteenth Night initiative, which will actually be extremely helpful.
For many of us, it's kind of a new way of thinking about how you use technology in different ways to solve some of the urban problems that we face every day. Very interesting and gratifying to see this put to work.
What I would also say is that everybody in the room is really looking forward to high-speed fiber in the downtown as well.
Yep.
That is true.
Yep.
Speaking of technology that improves our lives, one of the reports that we got back was the new metering ramps on the Belt Line, Randy Pat Paye Belt Line, that, you know, have the red lights that meter people into it. They had a 30, they studied it over, after implementing it for, I think, a year and a half or two years, a 35% decrease in accidents.
Oh, wow.
With no change in the speed or travel time. So, the metering actually is a pretty dramatic safety increase for that little section of the Belt Line there.
Oh, it's good to know.
So, good news. Thanks, everybody. I'll leave you in a minute.